Thank you all. This morning's panel is going to be introduced by our moderator. So let me give her a little introduction before we get started. The Honorable Catherine Kimball Mizell is a United States District Judge for the Middle District of Florida. She was nominated in September 2020 and confirmed by the Senate later that year. Prior to her confirmation, Judge Mizell was in private practice at Jones Day where she focused on complex civil and criminal litigation and appeals. Judge Mizell previously served at the Department of Justice as counsel to the Associate Attorney General, as trial attorney in the Criminal Tax Division, and as a special assistant United States Attorney for the Eastern District of Virginia. Judge Mizell has also served as an adjunct professor at the University of Florida and George Mason University. After graduation from law school, she clerked for Justice Thomas, Judge Katzis, who you heard from last night, Judge Bill Pryor in the 11th Circuit, and Judge James Moody in the Middle District of Florida. She is a graduate of Covenant College and the University of Florida Law School, goat gators, and we're really happy that she's here this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. I appreciate it. Well, thank you all for coming bright and early. I think this will be a fun panel to get some practical tips and advice from jurists and from advocates who've really litigated in front of every level of the judiciary. So first, to my left is Ms. Whitney Hermendorfer. She's at the Office of the Tennessee Attorney General with a very long title. Director of Strategic Litigation Unit and Assistant Solicitor General. Whitney previously worked at Williams and Connolly in Washington DC, where she focused on appellate litigation and initiating challenges to agency action. Whitney also clerked for Justice Samuel Alito, the same term as with Justice Thomas, so I got to know her well that year, and then again for Justice Amy Coney Barrett, her first year on the court. Prior to that, she also clerked for then Judge Kavanaugh on the DC Circuit and Judge Richard Leon on the US District Court for DC. So you have two people that have clerked four times on your panel. Whitney is a graduate of Princeton University and George Washington University Law School, and we're happy to have her here this morning. Next to her left is the Honorable Jay Mitchell, who's elected to the Alabama Supreme Court in 2018. Prior to serving on the Supreme Court, Justice Mitchell was an accomplished litigation attorney with Maynard Cooper. During his time in private practice, he tried a number of complex cases to verdict, successfully handled appeals, and obtained favorable settlements for clients. Justice Mitchell was born in Mobile, as was Judge Pryor, so you have that in common. I didn't know that until I read your bio this morning. And grew up in South Alabama and then in Homewood, which is outside of Birmingham. He's a graduate of Homewood High School and received his Bachelor of Arts with honors from Birmingham Southern College, where he graduated Phi Beta Kappa and served as president of the student body. And played forward on the school's 1995 national championship basketball team. We have a little athletic group up here. He holds a Master of Arts with University College in Dublin, Ireland, and he received his law degree from the University of Virginia School of Law. Thank you for being with us. Next, we have Mr. Ed Wanger. He's a partner at Holtzman Vogel and a Florida bar certified in appellate law. He has successfully handled every stage of litigation, from the initial complaint drafting all the way up to the United States Supreme Court. His appellate experience began also as a law clerk, so maybe that's a tip for one of the first things you can do to become a good advocate. He clerked for the Honorable Edward Prado of the United States Court of Appeals for the Fifth Circuit, and then continued as a law clerk for Judge Karen Anderson on the US Court of Appeals for the DC Circuit. And she might be the longest-serving active judge, is that right?
I believe she is.
On the DC Circuit, yes. He has since served as the Chief Deputy Solicitor General for the state of Florida and the General Counsel to the West Virginia Attorney General. He's argued dozens of times in federal courts throughout the country and has a wide breadth of experience from which he can share his knowledge this morning. And finally, but not least, we have the Honorable Robert Long. He was appointed by the Governor DeSantis to the First District Court of Appeal on June 10th, 2020. Before that, he served as a trial judge on Florida's Second Judicial Circuit Court. Before his time on the bench, he was general counsel and a major on executive command staff at the Leon County Sheriff's Office. A law enforcement officer and an attorney, he oversaw the operations of the legal and the professional service division of the sheriff's office. And before his time there, he also worked in private practice at a statewide law firm where he handled diverse civil litigation matters. Judge Long started his legal career as an active-duty judge advocate with the United States Navy. He's a veteran of the war in Afghanistan and also served as a naval officer in the Pacific Area of Operations. He currently serves as a commander in the United States Navy Reserves, and we're very happy to have him. Okay, with those introductions behind us, this morning's panel is focused on how to make winning arguments at the different levels of the judiciary where you might be advocating. So we're going to be covering a variety of things, including what kinds of arguments, lengths of arguments, to most effectively advocate for your cause in front of different courts, and also very practical tips of how to just make a very winsome, compelling written product to the court. So let's start with that first one. Key to effective advocacy is knowing the court before which you are arguing. We have, I think, every level of the judiciary represented here, so trial, intermediate appellate, and Supreme Court, and then we have advocates who've argued in front of all those various levels of the judiciary. So the first question I guess I'd ask, and I open up to the panel to whoever wants to take it first, is can you share the most important or helpful aspect that young lawyers should keep in mind with this regard, whether from your own experience as an advocate or while you're on the bench?
I'll go.
I don't know how to turn this on, but do they automatically? I think it might be on. Is it on?
So this tip is going to sound silly, but I think it's really important. Judges are people. They're not robots that spit out, type in case law and spit out the right answer. Judges are people, and they should read your brief and want to rule for you on a gut level. Of course, you have to back that up with the tools of interpretation, originalism, statutory interpretation, the precedent you're bound by, but if you cannot explain to your child or a high schooler why you should win in terms they can understand, you're leaving a lot on the table in terms of persuasive value of your brief. So judges are people, and they should want to rule for you if they pick up just the fact section of your brief.
I was actually going to pick up right on that, and since I think that the crowd here is all a bunch of good originalists, I'm going to go back to the granddaddy of the originalists, and that's Aristotle. So along those same lines of Whitney was talking about, there's basically three big ways that you persuade anybody to do anything. The very first thing is the logos, and that's really just take the law, apply to the facts, but that's really only one-third of the equation. The second is ethos, and that's what Aristotle called the character of the speaker, which means that you, as an advocate, you have to make sure that you come across as credible, who you cite as credible, what it is that you're doing. Essentially means do your homework and be someone that the judge can trust. But to the point that Whitney made, the last one is really important, and that's called pathos, and that's really what you would consider to be the emotional state of the speaker. You're not going to try to rile up the judge's emotions, but to that end, you want to give them a why, not just this is what the court above you said. Why is it that this is going to make me feel good to rule in your favor? And to that point that Whitney made, you can't leave out anything else, but give a judge a reason to want to rule for you. In a lot of those close cases, that can really matter.
Ed, can I ask a follow-up question to that? So what part of the brief is most important with your last point? Is it the fact section? Is it the way you've organized the legal section? How do you convince the judge that they should want to rule?
I think the first and foremost is take your time and craft a very, very good fact section. Usually, what I'll tell the young lawyers who work with me is kind of work backwards. The very first thing that you need, non-negotiable, is figure out what the law is, figure out what your facts are. Take that, run your argument as best as possible, but see where the gray areas are. And then, whenever you're working a fact section of a brief, make sure that you're doing it not in an argumentative way, but take the time to style it the right way. Do additional edits. Run it past somebody who might be a friend, somebody in your law firm, a classmate of yours, who has no idea what the case is about, and say, how does this make you feel? Just read this, and do you want to rule in favor of one side or the other? Does my client sound sympathetic? Does the other side not sound sympathetic? Have I pushed it too far? So really, at the front end, you want to tell a story. Whenever you're actually dealing with advocacy at any sort of level, the storytelling part of it matters tremendously, at least from the outside perspective. I'm curious to hear the perspective of the judges, if that makes a difference as well, but that's usually the way that I try to style my arguments.
I can speak from the perspective of serving on a state Supreme Court. I serve in Alabama. We have nine members on our court. And there are a couple of things I would share for young lawyers in thinking about handling an appeal or handling a petition at the highest appellate court. One is recognizing that even though you may not have had the burden of proof at the trial level, if you're appealing from an adverse judgment against your client, you're going to bear the burden on appeal, what we call the burden of presentation. So it's your job to come to our court and demonstrate that the trial court committed an error, and that that error is of such a magnitude that we would need to reverse the outcome. So what it means in practical terms is, let's say, the trial court, the trial court has a reasoned order. You need to be prepared to attack that order in a nice, respectful way, but you need to be prepared to carry the burden that the trial court got it wrong and to demonstrate to the state's highest court, in my instance, where the trial court erred. Now, I know in Alabama, I'm not exactly sure how it is in Florida in the state court system, but we see a lot of non-reasoned orders from trial courts. It'll just say, motion for summary judgment denied, or just something to that effect, one line, two lines. We have, there's a big wind at our court where we will typically affirm a judgment for any reason. So what you want to make sure you do, especially in the instance of a non-reasoned order, is just make sure you don't leave any bases uncovered, that you've really tried to take on the different bases on which the trial court could have relied in ruling against your client. So that's the first thing, burden of presentation. The second thing I'll mention is about precedents. And we are talking within the frame here this morning of textualism and originalism and trying to advance these ideas and principles. At our court, we have a number of non-originalist precedents. Just frankly, back in the day, justices making stuff up, and some of it's wild, but it's still there. It's still on the books. And so what I find many times is we'll have litigants come to us with interesting appeals, interesting petitions, but they're not really making an argument about why those precedents are wrong. And look, I get it. I mean, there's a precedent on the book. It's there. You've got to deal with it. And so what I would encourage you to do is do your best to distinguish it and show how it doesn't apply to your client, but I would encourage you, urge you really, at least in the alternative, to ask the Supreme Court, your state Supreme Court, to overrule that precedent and really make a strong reasoned argument for why that should happen. I'll say at our court, our policy, it's not often written down, but the policy is we don't overrule a precedent unless a party specifically asks us to do so, and they make a good, strong reasoned argument. So I would encourage you, it's an opportunity for you as a young lawyer, if you see a wonky or wild or wrong precedent out there, bring it to the attention of the court and ask them to overrule it.
Judge Long, you?
Yeah, I'll hop in on that. So I think we've touched on a couple of important things already. The sort of two facets to making a winning argument, the substantive side of your argument, and then the kind of the presentation side, which is, I think, often more art than science. But if I may just speak a minute to what Justice Mitchell was just speaking to, one of the things that I try to encourage young lawyers and clerks that work for me to do is to start off by thinking deeply about what, about the nature of the law, about the thing that we're doing. And I think that the legal academy in the United States has maybe overemphasizes case books and the study of decisions from cases. And I think for young lawyers and for advocates generally, it can be very important to take a step back and look at what does the actual law say? What is the substantive law at play in your case, whether it's a constitutional provision or a statutory provision? To remember that courts don't make the law, right? We think about what the judicial power is. We're adjudicating disputes between parties. And so the case is a written decision from a court is the resolution of a dispute. It's an application of the law, and it certainly can be helpful and useful in evaluating how the law should be applied in future cases, but it's not your starting point. And so I encourage lawyers to begin their analysis, begin your presentation, begin your advocacy from the place of the written law. What does it compel? And then use your decisions to move from there. And I think that can inform the things that Justice Mitchell is talking about as well. If there are places where a court is, has existing precedent on a particular question, evaluating those existing cases is much more effective from your first principles.
And if I may just add, they're obviously from the advocate's perspective, you're going to have a different strategy between, if you're appearing before Justice Mitchell versus Judge Long. Judge Long is going to be unfortunately a little bit bound by what might have come 20, 30 years ago that is not as well-principled or as well-reasoned as we might otherwise like. To the extent that you're not in a position to argue, or even if you're a little bit reluctant, or if your partner is telling you, don't argue to overturn precedent, a lot of times if you're before one of their two courts, you're dealing with a gray area. And where first principles, where that pathos, where originalism can really sort of reveal itself and make a difference in a case, is arguing why one case, even if it looks like it's on all fours, really isn't. Find a way to distinguish it and give the judge the reason to want to distinguish it. Say that this case was decided 30 years ago, and it's on the wrong side of the original understanding of whatever constitutional provision. If they're pulling a certain statute completely out of context, so that's what they did with this one case, give the judge a reason to cabin off the bad precedent if you're not in a position to ask for it to be overturned. And that's true the further and further you trend down to the more and more bound judges, from the trial court to the intermediate appellate court, until you're in a position to say, state Supreme Court, US Supreme Court, you got it wrong before, it's time to right the ship.
Can I have one thing to that, Judge Mizell, real quick? I will say too, just piggybacking off of what Ed had to say, let's say you have a court, a state Supreme Court, for example, in front of you, where you don't think you've got a majority to overrule that precedent, but you may have one or two judges on there who will take the ball and run with it. And so what I've tried to do at times, I could point to several cases during my five years on the court, there wasn't necessarily a consensus on my court to adopt originalist reasoning and perhaps overrule that precedent, but it gave me ammo to move over to the side and do a special writing, where I could make the originalist case for why that precedent ought to be revisited. And hopefully guide litigants in future similar cases about, really kind of draw them a map about how to come back and make these arguments in a future similar case. So a lot of this project is incremental, and so it may just be, you're not going to hit it out of the park with the court on this case, but maybe it's giving a judge or justice on that court some ammo where they can move over and try to nudge the court in that direction.
Yeah, and the last thing that I'll say about that is the person who can speak to that more than anyone else on this panel is probably Judge Mizell, because if you look at the career of Justice Clarence Thomas, a lot of the positions that are now seeing in becoming majority opinions were first, pardon me, first established in separate writings that he was doing through the course of a three-decade-long career on the bench. So this does matter. And when you think about the broader purpose of why it is that we, why it is that originalism matters, why it is that certain cases belong before the US Supreme Court or the state Supreme Courts, they matter because they're going to have effect going down the road. So plant those seeds, make those arguments. And I can probably tell you, and certainly all the judges on the panel and the former clerks will tell you, you've got more than enough word space to do that and fit those into the briefs. Make sure that you're pithy on one side, but use that to give the judges a reason to want to rule in your favor, or plant the seed for the next advocate to come around and pick it up and run with it.
So jumping off of that, part of this discussion we've been having is how to identify when you can make originalist and textualist arguments, and some are being sure you actually know what's a binding precedent for your case versus a case that's related but not actually on fours, and telling the court why that's the case. And then, like Judge Long was saying, explaining, well, if that's not actually controlling on you, trial court or intermediate appellate court, this is what the original, like first impression textualist argument should be. Can any of y'all give examples where that's come up in your careers, where you were able to do a first impression or distinguish precedents such that you got to make a full-throated originalist or textualist argument?
So this actually is coming up quite a bit now in my practice in Tennessee. As we've seen the US Supreme Court pull back on substantive due process and kind of federal imposition of rights through the US Constitution that bind the states, there is becoming an opportunity now where the action really is at the state constitutional level. We've seen this, at least in my practice, most acutely in the context of the post-Dobbs landscape. And now all of the fights have moved to what does the state constitution say about a woman's right to obtain an abortion? And it turns out, to Justice Mitchell's point, the Tennessee Supreme Court precedent around this was kind of a relic of just piggybacking on the Roe reasoning. Tennesseans have overruled that precedent in a constitutional amendment, so now the issue is, what does the state constitution say about a substantive due process right to a life or health exception in our abortion regime? That is absolutely untrodden territory as an originalist matter. And so we are now litigating, what is the common law scope of that type of exception? What did Tennessee, when it was ratifying various versions of its constitution, what was the landscape around the time of there? So that's just one example of an area where, because of the interaction of the US Supreme Court precedent and the state constitutional landscape, there actually are an abundant amount of issues that have not been approached from an originalist perspective at the state constitutional level. There's provisions of our state constitution that have never been interpreted before by the Supreme Court. So there is a lot of opportunity, and one thing to mention, sometimes, especially if you're in private practice, it can feel like there's not a lot of opportunities to do originalism sometimes, and I would really encourage you, to the extent you have pro bono hours and our ability to do amicus briefs, an originalist amicus brief is so helpful because as we're litigating in state government, that's a resource-intensive undertaking to try to get to the bottom of something, and so if your firm will allow you to devote resources to that, that can be a way you can really move the ball forward in particular cases. And when I was at my old law firm, we would often file kind of originalist briefs at the Supreme Court, because that was frankly some of the only types of briefs we were be able to get through the pro bono committee. So that can be very helpful too, if you're in private practice.
I think, sort of piggybacking off of that, Whitney's right that the opportunity is to weigh in for, as a matter of textual originalism on the blockbuster cases, they're out there. If your firms can let you do it pro bono, they're a lot of fun. We've written originalist briefs on, original meaning the Fourteenth Amendment, for purposes of students for fair admissions, low-probably enterprises. We sort of dug into the reasons why separation of powers matters, and they matter to the founders. That said though, there is textualism, originalism that is hiding in the mundane as well. And by that, what I can tell you, in Florida, there is a tremendous amount of land use litigation that is relying on sometimes very old, very unreasoned, but interesting nonetheless, principles of property law. So we've had the chance to actually brief issues that are going back to the original understanding, for instance, of the customary use doctrine, which is apparently a customary, not a common law, principle from Grand Old England, dating way back. That's the type of thing that if you're not looking out for, it might just fly under the radar. But there are issues with the reasons why that exists, there are issues with the reasons why one case should come out the other way. You can find these with statutory interpretation, with various state constitutional provisions that might not be that news-making blockbuster Law 360 article, but they are out there. And the more and more that you can pick that up and argue, the more and more the originalism and textualism just starts to get into the decision-making bloodstream.
So yeah, just to emphasize that, I think there are, we do think about originalism and textualism in these kind of blockbuster cases, but I really think that it's at play in every case. I mean, every dispute deals with these things, because as I, the point I was trying to make before, we have substantive law, and it controls our disputes. And frankly, when I joined the Court of Appeal, I was stunned at how many cases there were and where I received briefing that didn't even reference the statutory provisions that we're controlling, or cite to a case, and you spend some time sort of tracking back where, whatever that proposition that it's being cited for, and it leads to nothing. And so I think every case you have, there are opportunities to reevaluate, what does the law really say about this, to focus on those, to try to get back to finding the right answer. And again, depending on the court where you're practicing, you'll have varying levels of ability to do that, but I think it's at play in every case.
Well, I was just going to riff on that for a second. I do think it's important when you're looking at a precedent, applying and interpreting a legal text, if you have the opportunity, the bandwidth, the budget from your client to do it, I think it's important to really try to strip it back to the studs and see, let's go back to the beginning and see what this really meant, not just taking precedent upon precedent over years or decades. I think it's important to do that. I want to say something as well practically for those of you who may not be in a large government agency, or big law, or mega law, maybe there are some of you out there who are in a small or solo practice. This is for you too, and I really want to emphasize that. You may feel like this is something where it's a file at Jones Day with 12 associates on it, that's when you pay attention to this, but I don't think that's the case at all. And I would really encourage you, if you're in that setting, a small or solo practice, you may have to be scrappier, you may have to be more creative about how you go and identify those resources, but in addition to doing your own originalist research, I'd encourage you to reach out to law schools. We're very fortunate in some of our states that some of the, there are some professors at some of the key law schools who are interested in these ideas, and especially interested, to Whitney's point, in the idea of really trying to explicate the state constitutional provisions that haven't been visited or revisited in a while. So that could be an opportunity for you to get some research done, or maybe an amicus brief done as well. I think there are a lot of opportunities with law schools, faculty, thanks to the Federal Society for what they do with the faculty division, that's probably a good place to start. But I would really encourage you to go that route, and I think you can come in and make just as good an argument as a large law firm is making.
And I'd go one step further than that. Even if talking to the law schools and the departments, if you're thinking about originalism and you've got a good relationship with wherever you went to undergrad, talk to some of the historians there. So a lot of them have no idea that what they're doing, what their passion is, their vocation can actually be of a whole lot of use to lawyers, and especially young lawyers. It helps you make the connection, it helps you start to understand different things. And there are a lot of folks out there who would just love to riff on whatever it is that they're actually researching. They've done the work for you, so you might as well take advantage of it. Two other things to sort of remember, anytime you're in front of a court, if there's not some sort of unresolved question, you wouldn't be in front of the court in the first place. And every single principle of law started somewhere. So with that in mind, there's always, to Judge Long's point, there are opportunities for this in literally every case that you're working on. It might not be the best argument to make, but it really goes a long way to just think things through that way, because those arguments might emerge, and it might make the difference in the case you're working on. So the very first step to do is just get in the habit of thinking, why is a statute here in the first place? Why was it that the legislature passed it? And am what I'm doing is part of this inquiry, trying to figure out why it is, is the position I'm advocating for lining up with what the original understanding of that text looks like?
So for one thing to add on that, we are here talking about making winning arguments, and we've spent a lot of time talking about originalism and textualism, but of course, there are But of course, there are courts in the country that are not as focused on those issues as we are. And so obviously, it pays to understand the court you're practicing in front of. Who, you know, if you're in a trial court, who is the judge? How do they approach the law? What do they think about things? And so regardless of what you think about originalism and textualism, to some degree, it's important to know how that judge thinks about the law and to try to present your case in a way that's compelling to the person that's going to be making the decision, while at the same time, particularly if you are expecting an adverse ruling, preparing for what the future might hold. So you might have a trial court judge who's maybe not convinced by an originalist argument, but you might be also laying the groundwork for a future argument to an appellate court. And you need to make sure that you've included, for the sake of preservation, the kinds of arguments that maybe at some point you would like to make.
I think it's a really good point, knowing your audience and the length of the argument, presenting at the beginning what precedent is binding or telling the court right away, like, this is distinguishable because X, and by the way, this is what the statute says. And speaking of just the more mundane, I'll give a couple of examples from my court that I see routinely, and this is, I mean, this is your solo practitioner to your regional law firm, contract disputes. Every contract is a matter of textual interpretation. Now, some of the provisions might be identical to case law on point, but some aren't. And that's a perfect example of an opportunity to do a very kind of traditional civil litigation case using textualism. So instead of starting with, well, the precedent says that, like, a convenience, you know, termination for convenience clause always means X, why don't you put the termination for convenience clause up front and parse the language and tell the court why your reading is the correct reading under a first impression of the section? The other example that I see frequently is sentencing guidelines. So I think criminal practitioners sometimes think this is all great for civil litigators, but it happens a lot in the criminal context. And particularly now, post Dupree, where the Eleventh Circuit basically says you don't give the significant deference to application notes in the sentencing guidelines. That means you need to tell me why the guideline text itself dictates the ruling that you're telling me that I should come out with. So that's another good opportunity for textualism. And I'm frequently looking at, sometimes playing stairs, as, well, what does this word mean in the guideline? And getting briefing on that would be very helpful. So those are two just simple examples that I see on a routine basis. And my last question before we open it up for the audience is, how do you do textualism well, right? Like, we say, like, present the textualist arguments. What are the first things that the court wants to see? What are the sources that the court wants to have evaluated in coming to the right conclusion? You know, is it just reading law? Like, what do we need to help the court do their job well?
I hesitate to get in before the judges on this, but I'll tell you my approach, and you can tell me why I'm wrong. I like to think of every provision we're interpreting as, like, you're starting at the narrowest focus, and then you're zooming out with each tool. So I think if there's a, if you have, say, a clause of a statute, and the term at issue is one word, first you zone in and you figure out, when the statute was enacted, what do dictionaries and kind of common usage tools indicate that that term meant? Do not cite the 2023 version of the dictionary if you're interpreting a statute that was passed in 1970. That's just, you know, kind of JV. So you're doing the term, and then you're zooming out, and you're saying, okay, the term in context, is this term, does it take on a different meaning if it's used paired with this word, as it is in the statute, in kind of like a corpus linguistic sense? And then, you know, of course, there's precedent and context and all the other tools, but that's kind of how I go about each provision, but I would, you know, like to hear.
Yeah, I mean, I'll give you my perspective, and then I'm dying to hear what the judges want to see because it's going to help me out, too. But you do all that, but at the end of it, remember, to Judge Mizell's first point, that you're talking to a person. And most good originalists are going to understand that these law provisions, whatever you're trying to extrapolate, is going to have to be understood by the common person. So the best sort of one-liner was, make sure that whatever you come up with is something you can explain to a smart seventh grader. That's not to disparage, obviously, the intelligence of the panel, but because what judges are looking for is the ability to come up with a rule that is understandable by the folks who don't have a background in corpus linguistics. You want to do all that, but you want to actually make sure you're presenting it and wrapping it up in a way that the judge can say, I'm comfortable announcing this particular rule of law, or I'm comfortable with having the case come out this way because the average person is going to agree with that as well. So, I mean, it's something to keep in mind whenever you're talking about what it is that judges are trying to accomplish whenever they're putting out a final order or an opinion.
All right, well, I'll give a few pointers on this. First of all, as Whitney said, start with the text. Don't start with the precedents, start with the text. I think that's really important. Be careful about dictionaries. That's something that Whitney was talking about, too. I think there, I think you can over-rely on dictionaries. I see practitioners, and I may have been guilty of this when I was in private practice in hindsight, but I do see lawyers come in, they'll cite a dictionary and be like, there you go, kind of like it's a video game cheat code or something like that, and it's just not. So, you know, just be careful about over-reliance on dictionaries. When you are citing dictionaries, you want to do it carefully. And for those of you who may want to read a little bit more about this, I actually, I did a special writing in a case called Tuck Real Estate a few years ago. It's not long, it's probably six pages, just kind of talking about principles of good dictionary usage when you're making textualist and originalist arguments. But, you know, vintage is very important, what Whitney just said. You know, if you've got a provision from 1900, you don't want to be citing a 2023 edition. And you have to recognize as well that there's semantic drift in language. So, you know, the dictionaries are often lagging behind how language is shifting. So, you know, you may have a provision from 1900, probably better to look at a dictionary from the 1920s or 1930s rather than one from 1901. So I think that's important. You know, be mindful of not using dictionaries that are loose or permissive. You know, Justice Scalia famously was, did not like Webster III, you know, because there was a lot of looseness in the way that things were being defined there. And I would point you to, there's, I think there's an appendix in Reading Law listing out some really good, reliable dictionaries to use. Make sure you're using the right type of dictionary. You know, we often see lawyers come in, and they'll just cite Black's Law and say, there you go. Well, I mean, are we discussing a legal term of art here, which Black's Law probably helps us with, or are we trying to get to natural, ordinary meaning? And so I think that's important, too. And then I would encourage you, finally, on dictionaries, you know, just, you want to triangulate on meaning, so don't just cite me one dictionary from the appropriate period. You probably want to go find two, or three, or four that help us kind of understand, okay, are we in the right, you know, kind of lining up the bull's eye on what that might mean. The only other thing I'll mention, I could go for a while, but the only thing I'll mention beyond dictionaries is just precedents. If there are precedents that are against you, don't ignore them. I mean, you got, I mean, you know, a bad, non-originalist precedent out there, you got to deal with it. So don't ignore it, make sure you take it head-on, and make a good, strong textualist/originalist argument for why it should go.
Judge Long?
So, all good points, and, you know, I would second all of that. To add, when I am training, say, a new law clerk, I try to talk about this in the, by discussing the text and then the context, starting with, what is the, what is the actual provision? What does it say? What's your first impression of what it says? Doing that work on triangulating that language, and then pulling out and getting an idea of what the context is of it. Where does it, where does that phrase find itself within the broader statutory scheme? What is this machine, this statutory machine, doing? To give you a sense for what this text means, what is it meant to do? What's its place? I totally agree on the dictionary discussion. I also think that cases can be useful where courts, and not for the sake of, say, you know, a decisional precedent kind of thing, but the way a court or courts discussed that kind of language at the time that the provision was adopted, to help us to understand what these words meant, how were they used at that time? And so I think of that in a similar way to selecting your dictionaries at, close in time, or the immediate preceding dictionary to the time of the adoption of whatever the provision is.
If you want to see a really fun example of this analysis, I would recommend Justice Barrett's opinion for the Court in Van Buren, where she was interpreting the Computer Fraud and Abuse Act. That case is a fascinating statutory interpretation case where she steps through, she starts with the meaning of the word "so," and then kind of steps through and zooms out through these various provision, context, common law, just intuitive notions of what the government should be doing in the space of computers. The difference between a technical meaning, like, are we looking at computer dictionaries as a computer scientist would understand? Are we looking at common meaning? So aside from your separate writing that you mentioned, that's on the reading list, too, that comes to mind as an opinion where you can really see. And then you can see Justice Thomas, who dissented in that case, coming back and making, you know, arguments again. So that's just a really fun one for someone who might want to see how this plays out in, at the highest level.
I'll put in a plug here briefly for something that Whitney mentioned earlier, and that's corpus linguistics. I think probably everybody in the room is seeing head nods. You know, this is a method pioneer by former Utah Supreme Court Justice Tom Lee, who's a great friend of the Federalist Society and many folks here. But I think that's a really interesting method and technology. And Judge Mizell, I know you referenced corpus linguistics in your airplane mask mandate case. I thought it was a really nice analysis using corpus there. But I think that's an emerging method, an emerging technology that's going to help us hopefully do originalism better.
Yeah, and I think what we're hearing from all the panelists is it's a constellation of these different tools, right? It's not one magic bullet of, like, the dictionary, where this one case, one time, said the word "so" meant this. It's, you're trying to find sort of unilateral direction as to the meaning, and you look to these things to inform, okay, this is the meaning. So corpus, I think, can be helpful as, like, an additional tool in that sort of toolkit.
Yeah, I think that probably what Judge Long said is, maybe the most, you know, biggest thing to keep in mind is that doing this type of persuasive writing in particular, it is more of an art than a science. There's not ever going to be one, like, paint-by-numbers approach to do. And picking up on something that Justice Mitchell said, too, about picking the right dictionaries, identifying and addressing bad case law. Of those three prongs that I talked about earlier, logos, pathos, the last one, ethos, is your character, the character of the speaker. It's, at the end of the day, it's your credibility. That credibility, especially if you've been doing this as long as some of us have, it's something that's hard to build, and it's very easy to diminish very, very quickly. So especially if you're in front of courts that you see all the time, if you miss that one bad precedent, if you misstate it, if you cite 2023 Merriam-Webster instead of, you know, Black's Law from 1700s, you're going to be seen as someone who is less believable, and your persuasive ability diminishes tremendously by doing that. So look for the opportunities to do this type of analysis. Use some prudence whenever you're doing it to figure out the best way to go about, whether it's corpus linguistics, whether it's, you know, some other combination that you want to do. But really do your homework and make sure that you're doing it to get it right, so that even if you lose, you're going to have a judge sitting back and nodding, saying, that's a pretty good argument. Wish I could have ruled in your favor, but I'm bound by this precedent, you know? But they start to see you as an authority on this type of analysis.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I think we open up for some questions. Yes, sir?
Hi, good morning. Thanks, y'all, for being here. Miles Coleman from the Nelson Mullins Firm. My question is less about interpretive principles and a more practical one. What do y'all think about using a more conversational style in your briefs? And by that I mean, like, using contractions or colloquial phrases. And my questions are, and I apologize, it's a multi-part question. Do you find it more readable or grating? And then do you think it has at all the effectiveness? Does it have to do with the court's familiarity with you as opposed to if you are new in front of that court? Hopefully, that makes sense what I'm asking.
What was the last part you said there, Miles?
What I'm trying to get at is, if you are a known entity to a court, do you have more leeway to use a little bit more colloquial or conversational style than if you are, for example, a first- or second-time advocate in front of that court, and they don't know you as well?
I have thoughts.
Please, please.
So I'm not really a, I think law is a formal enterprise, and I think the court, when it's writing, so I've thought more about how the court should project itself, probably. It needs to stand the test of time of, like, you know, the federal reporter. So on one side, I am a big fan of getting rid of legalese. I hate legalese. My least favorite opening line to a district court order is, this cause brings itself before the court. Like, the cause did not bring itself before the court. Somebody moved to do X. Like, I hate that. I hate that. It's like, and then it's ordered done in a judge today. It's like, no, just ordered. Like, what do you mean? Like, all these, like, redundant verbs. So I would say get rid of legalese in your writing, and that's just good editing, right? Like, the shorter the sentence, the better. The more precise the sentence, the better. A well-placed colloquial phrase might be appropriate, but I think as a young advocate, you're much more likely to come across as juvenile than you are as persuasive. It's one thing for, you know, Miguel Estrada to make a funny joke at oral argument, it's very different for a first-time advocate in front of the Supreme Court. So I would steer away from trying to be too cutesy in your writing. I would focus on, like, good mechanics of, like, good grammar, good active verbs, no passive. One little tip that Judge Pryor taught all his clerks, and I think it's true for whether you're writing an order or whether you're writing a brief, is you should be able to read the topic sentence of every paragraph and understand the logic of your argument. Your topic sentence should actually be a topic sentence for the whole paragraph, meaning there shouldn't be random other thoughts in the paragraph that aren't referred to in the topic sentence. So in my opinion, the time would be better spent on those sorts of things. And then Ed was talking about this, too. The big, one of the big things I emphasize with my clerks is, like, the structure. Think through the structure of your logical argument, right? It needs to make sense, it needs to build on each other, and the reader shouldn't have gaps in, like, steps when they're analyzing, you know, if you got it right. So maybe that's not quite on point to your question, but I'm just, I'm not a particularly informal jurist, I suppose.
Particularly if you're turning draft, you know, this is the young lawyers' kind of panel. A lot of times, your work product is flowing up to a judge if you're clerking, or to a partner if you're at a firm, or your supervising attorney. They don't care if you can come up with the cleverest line-level little riff, they care that they can understand the structure of the brief and edit it as needed. And if you're trying to emulate, I think where clerks get in trouble is they start, and they've read a bunch of Justice Mitchell great opinions, and they try to write like Justice Mitchell, you're not going to be able to do that. So don't try to write, like, something you've read, right, in a way that is clear and logically structured. And as Judge Mizell said, one tip is, when you're done with your brief, highlight every first sentence of every paragraph, and just read the highlighted portions. And if you are missing a step in your argument, if there are sentences that don't belong in that paragraph, create a new paragraph. And topic sentences are something that, it's nerdy, but very important.
I would actually say, and this is something that I do, and I have a young lawyer working on a draft for me, is the topic sentence point is, I think, something that is so critical, but at the same time is so ignored, that whenever I ask someone, a younger associate, to turn around a draft outline for me, I say, what I want to see in the outline is a list of your proposed topic sentences. You know, let me see your point headings, let me see that, so that I can see that they understand the way that the argument's going to flow from top to finish. It's good to check it on the back end, but I've actually started to try to get people to think about doing that on the front end.
And I think that's something that young lawyers, it's like, you know, when you're in third grade, you have to write a 3.5 paragraph essay. Like, people forget that you need to outline. You have to have done all your legal research before you do the outline, before you start writing. And I think that's often skipped. I think people just start writing.
One other thing that I'll sort of say, and this is going to Judge Mizell's point, is that formal writing doesn't need to be boring writing. And a good friend of mine, who's actually in the next And a good friend of mine, who's actually on the next panel, years and years ago, put this book in my hands, and I would suggest that you all take a look at this too. It's by Steven Pinker, it's called A Sense of Style. And really what it was about was how, it's not legal per se, but it's basically how bad and boring academic writing is and why it doesn't need to be that way. So it's taking examples of some of the best academic writing out there, dry stuff, quantum physics and things like that, but it's written in a way that normal people can understand and then start to really appreciate. That's something that I refer to. I go back to that book every once in a while whenever I feel like my writing's getting a little stilted. You can actually write something that's engaging, that's, you know, a judge or clerk can sit down and say, I really enjoyed reading this brief. And it's not full of colloquialisms. It doesn't have like the pithy little contraction or something like that. I think if you actually start from that perspective, it lets you grow and sort of evolve as a writer. Until you get to the point where you are the Miguel Estrada and you feel comfortable being able to throw in something a little less formal for that pop. But it takes a long time to get there and putting those foundations in place at the outset goes a long way. That's how people become Miguel Estrada someday.
Justice Mitchell, Judge Long?
Go for it. Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said so far in response to that question, especially about topic sentences. That's something that I try to preach to my clerks too. You know, my law school roommate and moot court partner, before he came to law school, worked for a year for a former White House Communications Director. And what he got from that experience and what he shared with me, I remember, was, you know, there's, and what I now try to preach to my clerks too, there's a hierarchy of communication, and it's this, simple, complex, simple. And I find that a lot of lawyers and judges, I suppose, kind of hang out on level two. Like it's all there. It's dense, it's got the legalese, it's got, you know, kind of spots the issues, but it hasn't really been fully distilled to its essence. And, you know, to really get it to that point, it takes time and sweat and energy and showing it to a colleague or two and really trying to kind of distill it down to, you know, the simplest way you can put it. And so to your question, you know, it may be appropriate to put in a contraction or two. I'm not, that's not off-putting to me, but I do agree with Judge Mizell's original point, which is be careful, you know? And probably the better you are at the overall advocacy, maybe the more, the more that comes across all right.
I don't, maybe some of this is just personality, but my recommendation is to err on the side of the formal. And by that I don't mean legalese, but I don't use contractions in opinions, things like that. Although I have a beloved colleague that does and, you know, his opinions are wonderful and it's his style and it works great for him. So to some extent, I think you have to kind of know yourself and know your own strengths and know how you, you know, kind of your own capacity to convey a strong argument. But ultimately, I think you want to write with clarity. And that, I think, is kind of going from that middle to the, back to the simple, which is the, it's the hard part. It's the hard part. So cleaning your writing up so that you're really writing in a sharp way that delivers the message in a clear way, that's engaging to the reader, that doesn't labor the reader, they're not worn out when they get to the end of it. And all of that is, you know, frankly, hard to do because it's, it really is an art. And you, when you see, for a guy who reads briefs all day long, it's a joy to get a fun brief, you know? Regardless of what the issue is, it's just a well-written, crisp brief is, is like a relief. And so, you know, I don't think there's like a particular code you punch in that spits that out. But there are people like Ross Guberman and those kind of legal writing books, I think, that can be helpful in thinking about how you craft sentences, what structure looks like. But ultimately, I think, aim for clarity. Aim for clarity.
Don't argue through your parentheticals, last point. You'll see a brief that has a sentence and then it has six cases and all of the content is in a parenthetical. That's, I think, how a lot of people are taught in law school, to use cases. Just, just don't do that. If the case is important enough to be in your brief, pick out the relevant language and use it in the sentence, in the text of the sentence, and then cite the case and move on. Trying to read a brief that has parenthetical after parenthetical and trying to parse which part of this parenthetical is actually important or on point is really daunting. So that's just one concrete practice tip, I would say.
Yeah, that's making the reader do all the work instead of you doing it. Lisa, do we have any time before questions or do we need to wrap up?
Do I have time to ask a question?
As was I. Quickly, one quick question, yes.
Well, I don't know if it's going to be a quick question, but hello, my name is Catherine Urbannick. I'm clerking for the Honorable Joshua Mize on the Florida 6th. My question is, this is a young lawyers panel. In starting your legal career, is there anything you would have done differently? Or alternatively, looking back, what advice would you give your younger self in your early career?
Okay, I can answer that question. I think what the best thing to do, like when you're in law school, right when you're starting your career, you have, need to have an idea of what you want to do so that you're focused on achieving it, but you need to hold it loosely. Opportunities are going to arise to do things that you are maybe not contemplating that will grow you. I think it's more important to, like if you're at a law firm, to pick, work with the good partners than maybe on the quote, subject matter that you're interested in. So who you work for matters a lot, but having that sort of flexibility to accept unexpected opportunities.
One thing that I was happy that I did early on, that I think has served me pretty well, is be courageous enough to take on an assignment that you might think is a little bit above your head, while at the same time, particularly if it's a writing assignment, don't be afraid of having it come back and looking entirely different than what it was that you put out there. Those young lawyer learning opportunities, you might've been a fantastic undergraduate writer, you might've been a tremendous, you might've ace booked whatever legal writing class you had in law school, but to work with the real superstars, let them teach you. And not only that, but like take some time to appreciate why it was they changed certain things that you did. As you continue to progress and develop confidence and develop that skills, you'll see what works and what doesn't for, doesn't for you. And to Judge Long's point, I think this has come up a couple of times, don't try to just emulate somebody who writes in a way that you like. You won't do it right, it's not going to come across as authentic. Let your own voice come out. The more and more that you're doing it and the more and more that you actually have that, you're going to be a more persuasive advocate across the board. But to get to that point, you've got to have first the courage to stick your neck out there and then the humility to say, okay, that could have been better and now I see why it is.
I think we need to conclude, but please thank our panelists for being here this morning and sharing. Thank you.[1788.45]